Okay, well, everyone, today is Tuesday, October seventeenth. It is now four oh two. And this meeting is being recorded to be broadcasted on Zoom and on YouTube. I'd like to call it Florida.
Patrick McGovern, President.
Duanne Wilson, President.
Paul Pacheco, President of Religions.
By the way, religions, unified United States of America, whose republic which stands on.
Ms. Mello, would you like to do the nursery class?
So I have a question for the board in regards to our town page, our Board of Health page. I spoke with Mike Mullin Prior, just to make sure that this was even a request that I could make. And he said that it was. The Healing Community Study that I've been involved with is now coming to an end in December. We have a page that all directs everyone to us. The work that we've done in Berkeley, Dayton, and Rehoboth, and all our resources. They're looking for a page to now stick that in. So it would like you would put in that page and it would come somewhere other than there because now they're ending and they're not going to be paying for that anymore. They're looking for if we would allow one of our little tabs to be that. It doesn't cost us anything. Potentially could get us more people to our page, though if they don't live in Dayton, I don't know what they're going to do there. But it's just somewhere so that information is saved and it's still accessible to residents. If that is okay with the board.
Did Mike say that we need to make a vote on it?
Mike didn't say you had to make a vote on it. He said that it was fine. I was just bringing it because I thought, I mean, it's it's all of you guys' page that I don't want to put anything or have anything directed to that page that we don't want directed there. So that's pretty much why I'm asking.
All right, my opinion, you're the town nurses, you can make that decision, but we can vote on it with skip to public input.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, go ahead.
Paul, is this something that if Dayton searches, somebody from Dayton searches for this program online, it will it go right to that?
So I don't know how much they would have to put in for it to be directed to there. I don't know if it's going to be the same URL that will be embedded into there. I'm not going to pretend I know anything about the internet, other than how to get on it.
Do you know if there are other towns that also list that somewhere under their Board of Health?
The other towns are not going to have it on there and not for any reason that they don't want it to. The Berkeley, their Board of Health is very small, not as involved as ours. In Free Town, I don't really know to tell you the truth. I was just the first one to say I would be fine with that and that I would present it to the board.
I think it's a great opportunity for the town.
I just don't want to lose all the access to those resources for people to find online. So that's pretty much why.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, do we need to, if we need to make a vote, if I can make a motion.
Well, if we don't, we have to make the vote on it. We don't have unexpected on here.
I don't think you can take a vote, Ms. Mello, on the agenda, but I'm not sure that we can take a vote with anything on the website.
No.
I don't think it needs a vote.
I'm sitting at the board, it's amicable, the nurse, the mother, the soul, but.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, the other girls and you make the decision.
Maybe we could make notice of it in the paper newsletter that comes out to the residents, the senior residents, I guess.
Yeah, the strawberry vine and yep. So another thing I wanted to thank Jim and I think it was was that the highway guys or somebody, they got up the Narcan boxes, though I just looked. I was unaware it didn't have come with Narcan in it. So I'm going to after here, I'm going to go home and get it and bring it here. It has literally everything in it, but that. I just, whenever I saw it, I was like, I need to look up because that's like when the whole box is. But yeah, so shame on me, but I'm going to go home and I put it in there because I wouldn't want it to not have it after I've now had it put up. So I apologize for that oversight on my on my part. We have an upcoming flu clinic. It's going to be on the twenty eighth. It's going to be here. It's from nine to twelve, I think. I'm sorry, I don't have the time with me, but people can sign up online. It's preferable to sign up online. We have the flyer online. They just input all their information when they come. They don't have to do a ton of paperwork and stuff like that. So DPH had released this week the Board of Health workforce standards. I don't know if you guys received that email. It's based off of that blueprint that they've been pushing to us on the workforce standards that they're looking for us to have within our department. I think it's a great time for that to be presented to us because we just got Heather and she's like a blank slate. Now, we kind of have a better idea of the trainings that she needs and take what DPH is telling us that they're looking for workforce standards and then tailoring it to our community, what we have. So I think that's really good. And and I also have another training to send you, Heather, I'll send that to you later. I think that was it. Yeah, that was it.
Just quickly get back to the website. You didn't have to come and ask us about putting Narcan boxes up, right?
I thought, no, I came once.
We talked.
Yeah. No.
All right, so it's a fun thing.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Does it want to be safe to see it? Okay, we tell agent report.
How about your certification?
I have done multiple certifications.
I've been working on my certifications. I've got my allergenic awareness, my surf safe. Oh, my God, infectious diseases. I started doing. Jim.
Rodents and Bremen and rabies, disease. Rabies, guailloup phylaxis.
A handful that I can't even remember that I'm doing. Yes, housing. I also did hoarding, bedbugs. I started on Title V today, trying, starting that to get that going ahead of time. Keep myself busy, but I've been working on my certificates.
Okay. Oh, so you have a list of certificates that you'd like to see from the nurses' point of view?
In regards to.
Yeah, to help me.
Not off the top of my head, I'm really basing everything off the workforce standards that DPH treats.
Right.
And coming soon, November seventh and eighth, I have my CPO training. I'll be going. For the swimming pools.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. I'm sure you'll have more to come, won't you? No, I mean, as we go on, you send your own. There's more things that we're going to need. Okay, health director.
And just to clarify, a lot of the certifications that Heather is obtaining were derived from those those listings. And then there are others that maybe weren't valuable, so to speak, with Dayton, because we're not a big city. However, they're great to have a health under your belt as a health agent. And Heather has taken the initiative to go ahead and do that, so. So the, some of the things I want to talk about are on the agenda, so I will refrain right now from just something that is hot off the press. I was aware of this that you received today, Elizabeth, from the Water Department, from the Selectmen's Meeting. But the Water Department shared with us that they had elevated levels of trihalomethanes in the water. The, according to their periodical that was given out, their memorandum, eighty is the maximum limit for drinking water. And Oz came in one part over at eighty-one. So I did a little research. I wanted to know what trihalomethanes were. And evidently, it's something that is derived from a combination of the chlorine that's put into the water to disinfect it and biomatter that's in the lines through the years of sedimentary deposits. So the interaction between the two creates trihalomethane, which is a disinfectant. So obviously, drinking disinfectants is not wise, so they're making everyone aware of it. However, it looks like the 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 levels are just above the maximum allowed. As with any problem with drinking water, I encourage everyone to be cautious. Bottled water might be in order. This was found in the south side of town. The plan is on the north side of town. So that probably means a lot of the testing sites will test at least at the levels or above the levels. So we just want to be mindful of that.
And I drink tap water every morning.
Is that, you probably could use some disinfectant. Just kidding.
No, but I actually hope so, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Um, is that, sorry, is that at like the max or is that at what they're recommended? Is that like?
It's one popper billion over the maximum allowed.
Okay, so is that, I mean, that's more concerning than over like minimum would be.
Right, exactly, yeah, so it's it's more concerning, so I.
Give any recommendations?
From a health perspective, I would encourage everyone to just be careful about drinking tap water until these levels can be reduced.
Right.
Based on the the periodical, it does go into depth here. I don't want to read the whole thing, but it looks like they're working on the sedimentary deposits that help contribute to this, which is throughout the system in some of the storage tanks. So they're they're aware of it and they're trying to fix it. So it's something that we're going to have to be mindful of, so I would be careful about.
As they have the center of boiled water.
How often are they testing?
They they're ramping up the testing so that they can try and stay on top of it.
Okay.
Because even not just drinking it, you cook well with water.
Right. Right, yeah, yeah. So again, this is the Water Department, it's not the Health Department. However, it's a health problem, a potential health issue, so I just want everyone to be aware of what's going on. I can tell you, if it were my household, I'd probably drink bottled water and cooking with bottled water until they get this straightened out, so.
I'll keep drinking.
And I'll I'll have them send over the the testing on a more frequent basis. And if there's anything that I think we should get out to the public, I'll correspond with the board and then we'll put out a memo on our webpage or something.
Okay, so at what point over that eighty limit would we have to notify the public?
Well, we are over it, we're at eighty-one.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing this up.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So is that something on our website?
I guess maybe I meant bottled water. What what level would we have to say they have to drink bottled water?
Well, we can't mandate anyone does anything.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Or recommend, I guess.
Yeah.
A lot of times, though, with contaminated water, they recommend boiling.
Right.
True.
They they do say that boiling water, it will be helpful. They also do suggest that bottled water may be in order, but they they're not requiring anyone to do anything.
Okay.
I mean, I I think we have to look at this from a realistic standpoint in the absence of a mandate. Because it's considered a disinfectant, I would say that it would be cautious about consuming tap water right now, period, so they can get this figured out. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Don't go too far, you're going to be very bad. All right, next is a review discussing the act on the trash bag laws. You have information for the trash bags for us?
So we, I would like the board to make a decision tonight on ordering trash bags. We're getting low. I think you remember we did a stopgap a couple of months back. Inventories. Inventory is getting low. Need to make a decision. Spreadsheet was put together by office manager. There's a lot of information there, but there's information on there that are for a broader discussion. Right now, I believe the agenda item is ordering trash bags, correct? Okay, so.
That also includes picking a vendor.
Right, exactly. So we have three vendors that submitted pricing to us on your spreadsheet. The first vendor starts in blue and then Way Zero, I'm sorry, the first vendor is Boxes and Bags Unlimited. The second vendor is Way Zero, the third vendor is Mansfield Paper. Right at the bottom of the page, yeah, Mr. Chairman? Right.
Okay, so. Twenty-seven.
And then these, there are four for Way Zero, the second set of the RSD price, which we determined at the last meeting, we weren't going to go with the distribution route at this time. So those are there just for reference, but you're looking at the first blue for Bags Unlimited, the first two green from Way Zero, and then the Mansfield Paper in yellow. There are open bid front boxes and bags of clear twist tie. Way Zero has a colored bag with drawstring, a clear bag with twist tie. A Mansfield Paper, the coat bag ring at. Clip, Mansfield also has a clear with twist tie. I can surmise and tell you that the lowest price vendor was Way Zero by quite a bit. I say quite a bit, by by a few dollars per case.
Well, it's all the same to me, they're all twenty, per roll, twenty-seven dollars.
No, no, that's the that's that's the proposed, the the paid price per case is in the middle column.
Okay.
Eighty-two ninety-two for the large for boxes and bags, forty-eight thirty-eight for the small. With Way Zero for colored bags with drawstrings, we're at seventy-four dollars for large, forty-five ninety for small. Clear twist tie bags is sixty-four sixty-two, large, and forty oh five for small. And then Mansfield Paper colored bag with drawstring, seventy-six forty-five with large, forty-four twenty for small. And then clear twist tie is eighty-two forty for large and forty-seven sixty-five, so the low bidder is Way Zero. Also, the vendor that I've been collaborating with the most and seems to be the most responsive, I think their customer service would be exceptional if we were to go with them.
Yeah, no, I can, on Mansfield Paper.
Is our current vendor.
Oh, the colored bag with with drawstring, it's a seventy-six forty-five. And then the the twist bag, clear twist is eighty-two. Probably about twenty-seven dollars per roll.
No, that's the purple, the purple column is if we change the price for the bags. We we we're not having that discussion at this. This is a multifaceted spreadsheet, there's a lot of data around here.
Now, did you compare Way Zero, how much more it's going to cost to have them warehouse the bags for us?
We did, and we determined at the last meeting that we. I think we determined we weren't going to do that.
We mentioned it, and I talked about the fact is, how much work do we put into it? Like that, that was my question is, how much work do we put into actually getting the the bags to the vendors and and all that? If it's not a big ask to continue on the the path that we're on, I mean, might as well, it's not, not like Dayton's a massive city, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so.
And it makes a difference price wise.
Yeah, we can flush that out, so to answer your question directly, Mr. Chairman. To implement the RSD program, which Way Zero would manage the bag distribution and the retail sales. The price per case for large for colored with drawstring jumps from seventy-four dollars to ninety dollars and fifteen cents. And then for the clear twist tie bag, it goes from sixty-five dollars and change to eighty dollars and seventy-five cents, so.
And than normal, but it would just be a nuisance to the townspeople. I mean, if, and that was the question I asked, if if you don't, as the the person in charge, if you don't think that it's a big ask to continue doing what we're doing, then, you know, I mean, it's pennies per bag, but it's fifteen dollars more per case. So I mean, when you talk about how many cases do we order in a year?
We have been selling about five hundred cases a lodge a year.
So, and that's.
Five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred dollars in a year?
Yeah, I I figured it out the the last time, we would, we would be about ten to twelve thousand dollars. Be the difference.
I mean, it's only a couple of pennies per bag, but when you talk about five hundred cases, it's a big difference.
Oh, I understand it does, but when we look at what we're over, we're going to get to.
The other, yeah, yeah, the other part of that, I I obviously, we're going to get into the deeper discussion and I I encourage that. I I want everyone to know that I vetted the pay-as-you-throw program to see if it could be sustainable, self-sustainable. It cannot, because we are only charging for trash bags. Recycling is completely off the table, meaning we have no revenue stream to pay for the recycling. So with that said, I started, there was no way we can expect to sell trash bags for X amount to pay for both programs. It's just not going to work. So instead, we separated the two and Elizabeth was was great in in pulling all that data apart, putting it down so that can we get the trash program to pay for itself by selling trash bags? And leave recycling for another discussion. So that is possible, but it gets very close. And that's where the RSD program and the extra costs may not work, because when you, when you do it that way and we raise the price of bags to, let's just just say, for instance, for a discussion, we bought the clear twist tie bags. If we raise the price for large to twenty-seven and we raise the price for small to seventeen, we would have a net surplus at the end of the year, the way we're trending, of about thirteen thousand dollars, which means we're just about paying for that program with the bag sales. It's great, it's a great move, it's a great move from all fronts, but we're really close, we're only ten to thirteen grand at a surplus. You can have a change in bag sales that, you know, and I understand that the tonnage is a direct reflection on how many bags we sell, because if we sell less bags, we have less tonnage. But there are some static costs in there that we have to pay for, the contracts we have to pay for. So I would be reluctant to lose any revenue if we're that close on the numbers to an RSD program, even though there's costs associated and else with, you know, delivering them, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to try to see if we can manage it, at least try it for a year, see if we can come up with a a program that pays for itself. And then if we do and we find out that we're twenty, twenty-five thousand over, maybe we do kick it to the RSD program and and then we we can get that off our plates. But I think right now, having control of that would be the smart move.
I have a question. If we decide to have the Board of Health staff take care of delivering the bags to the vendors, how soon can we renegotiate with that company to say now we want to do this RSD? Is there a window from when we sign up?
No, but what they would probably do, I haven't asked that question, it's a good question. We pay for the bags, whether we house them or Way Zero houses them.
Okay.
Even though the bags may not be indicted, they're in a warehouse somewhere, those bags are paid for by us.
Okay.
So what I would probably think is that if we placed an order and then we decided three months from now, we want to go to RSD, they would probably take control of our inventory. We probably have to turn over our inventory to them that we have. We get all the bags here in which they're stored and kept here. So I would say as part of the RSD contract, they would quantify how many bags we have, take control of bags, and then the RSD program would kick in. Then we'd owe them some money for for the RSD program as well, there would be a fee, because we we didn't pay that when we bought the bag.
How how soon can we renegotiate this, is it yearly contract?
There's no contract with them, we're just a minimum amount of bags. The RSD program would be an annual.
Okay, that's, I guess that's.
We decided to go RSD, it would be for a twelve-month period.
Yeah, my only concern was the money that's owed to us now and them like at us, so.
They were not, they're not a collection agency, no. They they made it perfectly clear to us that if they took over any monies that are owed, you're responsible to get that money, Titan. They are only responsible from this day forward.
Right, from this day forward, if anybody falls behind, they're they're not going to give them any more bags.
Well, what I'd actually like to propose, if if you were willing, is that this, it takes about four weeks at minimum for a bag order to come in. They said eight weeks, but they can probably chop that down. So I'm going to really pressure them, if you decide to order tonight, which I'm encouraging you to, we're really low, that the next meeting, I want to bring to you a new contract, a vendor contract with different terms that basically says if you don't pay, you're not getting your next delivery. I think we have to have a hard stop with that. We can't, we can't be fronting bags to vendors who aren't paying their bills.
I might not have to wait until next meeting.
Okay, okay. But that's, I would like a new vendor contract for bags, our contract, vendor contract is obsolete. I made a joke at the Sol Waste Committee meeting, it was done with a typewriter, so, and we're still using it, so. I would like to revamp that vendor agreement to reflect the current pay rate, current discount rates and payment terms. And I would, I would ask the board at the next meeting to have that on the agenda so we can discuss it. Because once the new bags are received, I would like the new bags to be the trigger for the new vendor agreement and for the new price.
Does anybody have a motion?
So. No, so I would like to discuss because we have the option of a clear twist tie bag or a colored drawstring bag. And there seems to be, I think that discussion needs to happen, or what are we going to do? Are we going to stay with the twist tie? We, are we going to go with drawstrings? I said drawstrings, but I seem to be outnumbered, nobody likes drawstrings.
I I personally like drawstrings. Now, when you're talking twist tie, you're talking actual taking the bag and having to tie it or not.
That's how I, that's.
Because I've seen sometimes they have bags and they'll give you a package of regular wire ties. Then you have to put the wire.
We have now. Yeah, yeah, just, just. So I I honestly, I'm sorry, I don't know, I didn't even think we still made those little things, but.
Yeah. My wife's got a stack of them. My personal opinion, I'm with you, I think that the drawstrings are nice.
Yeah, I don't know, I, you know, my household likes drawstrings, but I've heard a lot of people in town say they don't like the drawstrings, and this is not about me, this is about Dayton's house, it's not mine, so.
I think drawstrings might be easier for our elderly population than the little tiny twist ties. I could be wrong.
Yeah, somebody's drinking dirty water. Yeah, if if you stuff too much into the trash bag, when you pull it out of the trash, it's going to rip.
What's the motion you're looking for, Jim?
Do you have a, do you have a?
I don't, I mean, I don't care either, honestly, I don't care either way. It's usually Tuesday night at ten o'clock that I'm dragging them out and ripping whatever, so it doesn't matter either way.
I won't be upset if she.
I I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at the bottom number, like I'm a numbers guy, and the twist ties are cheaper, and they're by twenty dollars, fifteen dollars a case? Am I reading it wrong?
No, reading it right, the twist tie bags, I wouldn't go under ten dollars.
I wouldn't go colored bags, I would go clear, clear is going to be cheaper, the plastic is cheaper. All right, Jim?
Clear. No.
Way Zero? Are you talking about Way Zero?
Usually anything.
The least expensive option is the clear with the twist.
Clear with the twist ties, right, that is the least expensive option.
I haven't heard anything like from our complaint that they didn't like the best, like the twist pattern that we have now. And if I know anything about racing residents, I think if we go another time, without being like this long. this long drawn out thing that everyone who's able to have like heads would explode.
Right.
In the past, we've changed from with, from drawstrings to.
Oh, have we?
Didn't we?
I don't know.
I, I had heard that.
We had drawstrings at one. Nothing but complaints, right?
Complaints, right. But I completely agree with you that we haven't had enough public hearings yet to go from twist tie to drawstrings.
I mean, that was. Talking about trash bags for six months now.
I mean.
It's on, it's on the agenda, so.
In that respectfully, Dyton residents, this is not a slight at all. We just want to make sure we get this right. Cause where the office, you're gonna call if you don't like them, so.
I, I think we should go with what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I like that idea. Like just keep it, it's gonna be, so I, I think there's gonna be enough complaints over the fact that their bags were wider and not taller. So I think keeping the changes minimal is probably the best.
And then the other thing I was going to ask is because this is a new vendor, I didn't want to buy a whole year's worth of bags right now. Um, I feel comfortable with their service that if we bought a reduced number of bags, put the bags on the street, see how they react, that, that might be a better way to go, then we can always reorder.
And if they're willing to do a short order for us now.
Yeah, there, there was a hundred cases apiece. We are at a one to three ratio. So a hundred smalls is what the minimum order would be. We would have to buy three hundred large in order to meet the minimum, the ratios that we sell bags at and meet the minimum threshold of a hundred bags for a hundred cases for the small.
For a year.
Uh, no, that wouldn't last a year for us, no.
How much would, how many cases are a typical year?
Five hundred and a hundred and seventy?
You did say that, so, so three hundred.
Three hundred would bring us to early spring and, and then we can regroup. And if we need to place another auto, we do that. I also am going to propose toward the end of the fiscal year that, um, we may petition for a reserve fund transfer to get our bags inventory to get to this time of year. So that we're not scrambling at the end of the fiscal year with a budget that hasn't been approved, a town meeting that needs to take place, and a dwindling order of number of bags in the conex box and saying, how are we gonna make this all work? So my thought was that towards the end of the fiscal year, if we could, we could get a reserve fund transfer to get us to October. And then we would have a fully funded fiscal year to buy off bags to get us to the following October. So it's just to play catch up a little bit to get us off of the fiscal year reorder cycle, so.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, I'm okay with it.
I get a motion?
Uh, did we, do we have to pick a bag? Are we good?
And what type of bag?
I'll make a motion that we go with Way Zero. Um, what were we saying? The clear twist tie bags?
I got a second?
A second, that's.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll email her tonight.
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
It was, it was a team effort. Everybody played.
Presentation.
Doesn't go to waste. No pun.
Everybody.
It actually does. All right, so, uh, are you getting your permit link? I mean, we're done with.
Yeah.
Well, that should be your permit link.
Yep, so, um, I went to my annual conference in early October, which is at UMass Amherst. I go there every year. My permit link rep was there, so I anticipated on meeting with him and bringing him up to speed on how we want to expand permit link into other various departments. I believe selectmen have made this a priority. So in speaking with him, there is a health department module that is off the shelf and needs very little work to become operational. He said it might be a little more than Dyton needs because it's really augmented towards twenty thousand or more. However, we do have a very active department, so I do think that doing a custom program would be more cost effective. I think the off the shelf product, which is still somewhat customizable will work. So, um, the cost is five thousand dollar buy-in. That's a one-time fee. And then it's the annual user fee, which is a thousand dollars per user. We currently already have a user, uh, one user with the department, so we would have to add one more.
So would it cost another five thousand or just one thousand?
It would cost another thousand. So next year's budget, when we redo our budget, will be two thousand dollars for the annual cost for permit link. So the upfront five thousand, I'm gonna cover in my special article for, that I wrote years ago to fully implement the system, uh, which has been slow going, but it's getting there. So I don't need any money from the board to get this going. I just need your consent or approval. And then we'll build the user fees into next year's budget when we start those discussions, which will be two thousand dollars a year. Um, the other thing I want to do is I want to couple the permit link implementation with the, uh, fee changes because I want to try to make sure we cover those costs to operate the system um, into the permit fees, uh, in addition to the other soft costs. So, um, I have worked on that. I know it's a priority for you. Um, but I plan to have that on next month's agenda as well. If you give permit link your blessing, we'll be able to get started on that implementation. And then, uh, next month, in addition to, um, the vendor agreement for the bags, I would also discuss, uh, these previous scheduling.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do building department at the same time.
I'm gonna use them anyways. It was just whether we're using their permits or we're building our own.
Right.
All right, uh, well, we discussed it, reviewed it, now we act on it. Have a motion?
I motion that we move forward with implementing the permit link software into Dyton's system.
Second, that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, board.
Thank you.
Support.
All right, now, Jimmy, must say that the overdue vendor accounts. Was this, did put the other sheet here for us? And by God, not cheat the money amount. I spoke with Paul Reynolds before I went to talk to one of the vendors who owed us the most and didn't really get anywhere. They said they were gonna check that day. Then they told me that emails, uh, they hadn't received emails. I expected this problem to happen. We've been two months trying to email and they keep passing it off to somebody else. Elizabeth, do you remember what, uh, Paul had said in one of the letters drafted up?
He would need to vote, uh, a vote from the board to and getting.
Right, but.
Kind of like a debt collector involved.
Yes.
So he would need the board's vote on.
Right, because it's gonna cost us, right?
Yeah, and, uh, the largest vendor owes us right now fifty, almost fifty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-nine, seven is past due, extremely past due, but they, they keep ordering and they're not, uh, paying anymore. They just got an order the other day they haven't paid for. That's right. I think it's time that we need to keep setting motion, how we're gonna collect this and not let them get into us any deeper. Cause we're not getting anywhere. All they're doing is getting in deeper and deeper and deeper. I know we've had this discussion before and people don't want to stop in one particular vendor. But we have a list of vendors. Uh, this vendor, as far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, is the only vendor that is out of town. So they're taking most of the bag sales and not paying us. And our local businesses who pay the taxes in town are paying for the bags and they're not getting the advantage to sell them. I don't think that, uh, it's not shutting town off, but I think that, uh, they need to stop paying some bills before we give them any more. Cause since we've talked about it before, we've gone even further in debt by another quick, over ten to twelve thousand dollars. So I'd like to, well, first of all, I want you to, uh, give me your opinion before I ask what I want.
So, um, since our last meeting, I, I have spoken with, um, Mrs. Wilson and um, she had a concern about what other towns are experiencing with respect to this one vendor who seems to be delaying payments. So the office manager reached out today to surrounding community and they too are having issues with getting prompt payments from the vendor. So I think it's probably, um, having dealt with lodge companies um, through my businesses, I can tell you the larger the company, the longer it takes you to get paid. I understand that. So, you know, that will probably come up in discussion when we talk about the vendor agreement. Because if we have a hard stop, don't send the bags and they're thirty to sixty days behind on payments, that's gonna have a real time effect. However, the fact that they're in arrears by almost forty thousand dollars is just.
Actually, it's like fifty-four, but past due is thirty-nine.
Right.
Um, but they, they keep ordering more and they're not sending any more checks, so.
Right.
Past due is just gonna get bigger and bigger.
Right. I, I also, um, so, so to me, you know, that, that's something, we have to close that loop, period. But the other question I have, and I'm not sure, and I don't know if you have the answers to this, Elizabeth, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I noticed with this, um, sheet that you, you submit, supplied to us that a couple of vendors are in arrears, um, as well. Is, is it normal for those company, those vendors to be in arrears? Are we starting to see a pattern where people are having a hard time paying their bills?
Uh, usually when we place an order, they pay the previous one.
Right.
When we deliver the second. So I called a few vendors like Rochelle's. They got them out of last Friday and I said, you didn't pay for the last one. So they said they were gonna come in and make a payment. But the other ones that you see there, I have the eight eleven opening voice, I contacted him, he's coming in. He's gonna make an order and pay. And then the first one on the list, their number is no longer valid. I don't even know how to get a hold of them.
Okay.
Cause I did reach out to them.
Okay.
But, but they haven't been ordered anymore, have they?
Nine, nine one was the last one.
I have a question. Do we have contacts with any of these or like an MOU or?
That's what I was gonna say. So where does our, where does our thing stand currently? Do we have?
What I'm alluding to.
Just speaking about.
Well, yeah, we're, we're still on the threshold.
Honestly, I've read that. I don't want to fall back on that vendor agreement because we could be in a world of hurt.
So, I mean, that's the thing, like, what do we have to, if, if we, if we send something to collections, there's gotta be an agreement.
Well, well, yes and no, um, because we, we invoice them. So we, they, we delivered product. We have, we, they got, received the product. So technically, it's no different than any other retail vendor.
They could turn around and say, the contract we signed with you back in the typewriter age said that we have twenty-four months to pay.
They, they.
Like that's then.
They could.
But does it say that in the contract that they have any, a certain amount?
Doesn't say much, no.
No, so it doesn't say much, no. So generally thirty days. I understand what you're saying about when you're dealing with larger corporations. That usually comes into play when you're bidding on jobs.
Right.
If you bid on a job, well, you, if you bid on a job that you know you're not gonna get paid for a hundred and twenty days, you add more money to it.
In, in my history, dealing with cities and towns, I, I bill cities and towns all the time and, and towns are the same. They're notorious for ninety days before I get paid.
Yeah, Dyton's not, Dyton pays right away.
Typically.
I don't.
One of the rare ones.
It works for the large corporations and then that turns over to you. They don't want to put money out.
No, no, I understand that, but when people bid a job to do for a company, they know, we're not gonna get paid for a hundred and twenty days, so we're gonna charge a lot more than we're gonna pay the average person that's gonna pay us in thirty.
I have a question. With the existing contract or agreement that we have in place with these vendors, does that allow for us to stop bringing them product at any time we choose?
So the problem is I can't find all of the agreements that were signed unless, have you seen them? I haven't.
I've seen a few in their folders.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, if there's other things on the agenda, I can go pull one out and, and have a refresher, but I, I actually think that we can flush this all out with the new vendor agreement because the, the new vendor agreement isn't really a new vendor agreement. It's new to us, meaning we're, is an updated vendor agreement. But I'd like to have language in there about any outstanding invoices as well.
So I agree, yeah.
We have a cap, we have a catch-all agreement.
They also agree that they owe this previous in order to sign a new agreement with us. They make, yeah, and then we could hold them accountable.
We can't even get them to acknowledge an email. And was the, who didn't, was in contact, they wanted her to go on to their website, go onto their portal and have her figure out their system. And again, they may have their rules with whoever they, they deal with and they pay that way, but it's our rules. If they want to buy the bags from us, here's our rules. And if we're gonna give them an extended period, we're gonna have to give it everything.
I, I understand that, but in, in defense of the corporation, we're a little old Dyton, as, as long as we're still giving them trash bags, they're not gonna really care, okay? So to me, that's the only, the only cusp we have is if we shut them off, period.
Well, that's.
I understand there's reservations about that and I get it.
I mean, it's tough when you look, I, when I'm looking at this, and I know the problem is, is we're all focusing on the fifty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
And, and that's, but when you look at their dates and you look at it, I mean.
We're getting invoiced back to two thousand and twenty-two. The old small and there's a.
No, I'm looking at twenty-two, sorry. I thought it said twenty-three. I was like, they're really only sixty days behind.
No, it's twenty-two.
I believe there is something in the agreement that says that we can stop servicing.
I, I don't see that. I see anything in an agreement, whether we have to continue selling it to them or not. If we go into their establishment and we get a grocery load of product and we say, okay, well, I'm gonna pay you in ninety days. They're gonna say, no, we're not selling to you. So we're the ones that sell the bags. We're gonna set the rules and we're not gonna let the vendor tell us how we're gonna get paid. We're gonna tell them how they're gonna pay us and if they don't like it, they don't buy our bags. And if they don't buy our bags, see how they're out of town, it'll be more beneficial to the people, the local businesses. So I'm all for shutting them off until they start paying at least a, a good amount of it.
How soon before we draft a new vendor agreement?
In your next meeting.
It'll be drafted by the next meeting?
But we could, if we don't make a decision tonight, that could be another twelve thousand dollars that they owe us. Right. And the only thing that's gonna, they already.
So low on inventories, that might help you make a decision.
We are.
So my concern with this is, and, and I get it, but my concern is you're buying trash bags, they're taking the twenty dollars and they're not marking it up, they're not making a profit. Only people that.
They are.
They are making profit.
They're sold at a discount.
They're making a profit out, they're putting it in their pocket and they're making us wait.
And the only people that are gonna get hurt on this are the people in the town.
How?
Because the people that, that go to Hannaford's, every, like, look at the volume that they're selling. That's all, that, that's not Taunton residents, that's all Dyton residents. So the, the only, th- this company is gonna say, okay, fine, shut us off, we'll pay you the fifty-four thousand dollars when you have a lawyer knock on our door. That's the only way we're getting a check for fifty-four thousand from a company that big.
I.
People in this town, to Nicole's point, are gonna be pissed and rightfully so. I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything negative, but I'm saying they're gonna be pissed because they're gonna walk in one day and they're not gonna be able to get bags.
So what do you think if we, if we agree to hold off on stopping that, I mean, keep that vendor in place until we have a new agreement where we can have them sign a new agreement that says any past due amount that's owed to the town of Dyton will be paid in full before the next shipment of this new agreement comes.
However.
And that's within the next meeting. That's thirty days. If they sign it in thirty days.
However, we've been months and months into just trying to get to them to answer an email. And how long do you think it's gonna take us to get them to sign an agreement?
So I, I have one, I have one more thing to add.
Who's got the authority at this establishment to sign the agreement? You're gonna go to the manager of the store, you say, oh, no, that's corporate. We're gonna get a hold of corporate and it's gonna take three months for them to sign the agreement that you're gonna come up with in a month.
Yeah.
And it's not hurting the people of Dyton. Actually, it is hurting the people of Dyton that we're letting them go so far into debt. And the people indicting that have the facilities indicted, that are selling them, that they're paying for them, they're the ones that'll lose out on sales.
Okay, Jim, more, yeah?
I have two things to say, yeah. The board's gonna vote on the vendor agreement next meeting and then they have to go to all the vendors. So there is some truth to what the chairman's saying. I don't know what the timeline is, but they'll be live to go get vendor signatures as of the next meeting.
Right, okay.
Right, now. Other thing is, and I know that you're saying it's not our responsibility, it's not the office manager's responsibility. They gave us an outlet to go on and go through all of these invoices electronically through their online system. We have not done that yet. I get that it takes time, but.
I can only go back six months on that online system.
Okay.
You can go back to.
Right, so, so.
I tried.
Okay.
If it's older than six months, you need to put in a request for them to research it.
And we haven't done that yet, right? Okay, I at least think we have to try that. If that's the avenue they're telling us. Okay, I at least think we have to try that. If that's the avenue they're telling us that we need to, to follow, I get that you're saying they should be in our terms.
Right, but think of it this way, Jim. It should be on our terms, for one. But two, however many people in Titan need trash bags, they're gonna still buy that amount of bags from the town. They might have to go to a different vendor to get them, and then they'll be questioned, well, why doesn't this place have them anymore? Oh, but this place has them. So why not let the people of Dyton that sell them, go to, go to the local market and get them? And if we wait another month, again, not to repeat myself, we have an agreement in a month and then we go to sign it. It's gonna take months for them to sign it because they're gonna say, it's gonna go to corporate and they're, they're gonna have all kinds of excuses. And I strongly think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers, because in a month, Elizabeth, how many, how many orders a week do we get from that vendor?
Once a week.
And how much does that average?
About five.
About five thousand?
Sometimes forty.
So, so we're got, looking at another twenty thousand dollars before we sign an agreement with. Or we're, they're not getting anymore until we get paid.
Okay, so we're, we're going around the circle and we're repeating everything we said. We have two options, we either A, cut them off and deal with it. But I fear that if we go, the option of sending them to collections. The first thing they're gonna say is, have you exhausted all avenues to collect this money? And to Jim's point, w- we haven't. And if we haven't, then how can we say, you haven't paid me, but I'm not following your process? And if, if we, i- if we were given an avenue and we didn't then say, no, we're not doing this avenue. And put our foot down then, then we can't really put our foot down now and say, you gave us an avenue, we're not trying it, we just want our money. We need to pick one or the other. So we're either shutting them off. Or we're gonna play ball, but I guarantee you if it gets sent to collections, the first thing collections is gonna say is, have you exhausted every avenue to collect this money?
Right, a- and we don't have to, we can leave that option aside. We don't have to go and tell them that if you don't do this, we're gonna send you to collections. We can just shut them off. And wait, if they continue not to pay, then we have no chance to go to collections. But, and we, we're looking at right now, and they're not paying, and they're earning four thousand, five thousand dollars a week, that could be another twenty thousand dollars. The taxpayers are eating, because that company wants to make a profit, Elizabeth.
We placed an order two weeks ago and we didn't deliver it. The week I came back after that, I had three emails from someone at Hannaford's. Saying they were gonna look into it. But they, the email even said, we, uh, we know it's time consuming. So.
Right, but.
We ruffled, we rippled the waters a little bit by shutting them off at that one week.
Right, and I, and I, I, I strongly think we don't have to go with legal counsel or anything right now, we don't have to vote and draw up a letter. We can do that later, but I could not see the taxpayers, it's hurting our taxpayers, go forward. And let a company keep taking five thousand dollars a week, making a profit on it, and not paying us.
Elizabeth, what was the date of the transfer of ownership of the vendor that we're talking about?
Answer that question.
Okay.
I was, was the manager, that was three years ago.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Oh, I thought.
It was an acquisition of a large company that also owns Stop and Shop and a few others.
Oh, okay.
I think they started using a different financial distributor, because the checks came from a different name. At that twenty-twenty-two month where we.
Right, so the takeover might have been three years ago, but the, the financials probably took a couple of years to catch up. So it's probably about the time that this new system was put.
And, and this procedure that they told you to follow with the past due amount, is that for anything? Beyond the transfer or beyond that date?
It's beyond six months from today.
Okay.
To be put in a request.
So even after the transfer, they're asking you to request for past due?
Yeah, but, um. We haven't gone through, and I, I know it's time consuming, but we haven't gone through the past six months that are available through the system yet. And we haven't requested them to go back further once we got through those six months. The reason why I think that's important, um, I, I think. Paps right on, spot on. The only way they're gonna play ball is if we play ball a little bit, okay?
Right.
But, think about on the other side of the corporate world, who's sitting on the other side of that desk, ready to, or keystroke to, they can pay an invoice, right?
Yep.
This process they need to go through. Obviously, that process broke down. Now they're telling us there's a process we need to go through to see if we can quantify what invoices are owed and which aren't. If we go through that process and the checks and balances come out, we might get a check.
We have.
You have?
Elizabeth gave me all of the invoices.
Oh, have you followed the procedure that they asked us to do?
Can't go back that far for one. I went to the local store, the only one that sells them, I met with the manager. He told me that he was gonna try to get me a check that day, then he told me that he sent out an email, he didn't get any response. And then he called me back that afternoon, which was the next day, and told me that he finally did get a response. And they're working on it.
There's no way that a local store manager is gonna be able to write you.
Okay.
No way.
And especially for that much. Well, the respect, I'm not gonna disagree with you, but.
And not only that, but we talk about discounted bags that they get, and what do they get? Pennies. And a company that makes billions, it's, it's pennies. So it's not, the only people, and I know we say that it's going against their profits because they're making money off of our bags. The only people that are gonna hurt if we shut them off are the people of the town. They're not gonna care, and I guarantee you that our fifty-something thousand dollars that's passed due to us. Is ten times that to massive companies that deliver eighteen-wheelers there on a daily basis. So.
You're a hundred percent right. You make pennies on, on a lot of, what is, what do they pay per bag? Uh, per roll?
Four ninety.
Four ninety, that's a small watch. And what do we sell them? It's called a twenty?
Twenty a roll.
Twenty a roll? And they're paying how much a roll?
They're paying four ninety for the case, so it's twenty-five in the case. They're only getting a ten dollar discount.
For?
Per case.
Per case. There's a, there's a lot of items that they take.
They're getting a lot of money. Ten dollars, it's not, it's pennies compared to the amount of volume that goes through that building.
Yeah, right.
And we're the last on their list of people that they wanna deal with, and we're, we're not following the policy, other procedures that they asked us to follow. We haven't done any of it, and we're just gonna say, we're done.
And, and that's fine. Again, I keep going back to, I don't want personally to hear, I don't wanna be rude. I don't wanna discuss their policies. If they do not wanna sell our bags, don't. But we have other places that are selling our bags.
We don't have, we don't have a contract, we don't have anything in place saying that this is our process. We don't, we don't have a legal signature, we don't have a legal agreement, we don't have anything. So we, out of the goodness of our Dyton hearts, because Dyton is a big heart town, said, take off all of our bags. And now we're gonna say, you owe us thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. I want my money, goddammit, or I'm gonna hurt the citizens of this town. That's it, that's not, there's no other X and, it's a, but it's about it. When you're behind on your credit card payment, you signed a contract with the credit card company. And that's when they come after you. We can't, we can't go after them without going through the motions to try to collect the money, and that's the problem. We've done nothing, except go and talk to the manager in the store and send a couple emails. That's it.
Jim, I don't think Hannaford's is gonna talk with us about any money we owe. Until we follow the process that they've asked us to go through. As convoluted as that sounds. Me of all people, you should understand, I would be the last to agree with that. However, we're dealing with a large corporation. They don't have all the invoices at their fingertips. They deal with millions of invoices, I'm sure, on a yearly basis. We're just a little, small town that's selling trash bags for a small upcharge on their part. I think we need to go into the portal, we need to go, the office manager is excellent with making sure everything is in order, we need to go through the portal. Figure out what's paid, what's not paid. I'm sure there's a dispute process, if it's not paid through the portal, where you say. I dispute, I did not get paid for this invoice. And then it goes, goes to someone else and then they deal with it.
Elizabeth went through that, she could.
Email I got, they said that the account representative was gonna look into it, but it's time consuming, so it's gonna take some time. That was the last email I got, and that was Tuesday last week.
So they're still on the sensor, so it's gonna take some, they, they can at least have response. And I do agree with you, we're just little to them, so they'll just take advantage of the town and just keep ruining this bill up.
So in the amount of time that it will take for you to do what they've requested that you do as step by step. That will be enough time for us to put together a new vendor contract with something in it that says, any past due as of this date becomes due immediately. So that we can hold them if they wanna sign a new contract.
My only.
Amount of time would be.
My only thing is, is if we, if, if we go an avenue of shutting them off, that we need to tell them. I, I will not stand by and.
No, no, I don't.
You said five minutes ago, just, just ignore it and just stop sending it and see what they say, and we're not doing that.
No, no, I didn't.
If, if we wanna reply to whoever, whoever emailed Elizabeth.
I, I didn't say, just not say anything to them. What I meant was, let them know that we're not gonna deliver anymore until this is done. That'll get the attention. Elizabeth told them, they didn't get the bags last week, and then now they're, they're getting the bags.
Inquiry I made today to ask how other people have had experiences with them, I was told they had to stop selling them as well.
And we, we tell them, that's, listen, we've tried for months and months and months, you guys said, take a long time. If it's gonna take a long time, and they've already, two months, they're gonna start by, we're not getting anywhere. The only results we're gonna get is we let them know that we cannot supply them anymore until they pay the bill. If we go in there.
I, 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 I understand. I, I'm, I'm, I make a decision, like, we need to make a vote because I'm done.
I would like.
Talking about this for half an hour, and we've been talking about this for a year now. So I, I'm done. What are we gonna do? What's your recommendation, Jim?
Um, until I, I know that we followed their process, I, I don't recommend shutting them off.
But can I make a motion?
I, I haven't really heard that. I've heard that you have, but you haven't. I, I wanna hear it from the office manager, please. Have you followed the, the, the process that they've asked you to do?
I did not submit any requests for older than sixty day, sixty, uh, six months.
But you, but you did the last six months and we're waiting to hear back from them? Is that where we're at? But you have not.
They paid up, they sent me a check today, and they paid current, because we're net dirty, right? So if you look at the spreadsheet, they're sending you out today, um. Nine fifteen, which, what, two days? So that's the only one that's old. The rest of them are from six months prior. So to them, they think they're current, because they said they paid us all those old bills. So.
And you can only go back six months on their portal that they told you to go.
So if they're current within the last six months, if that's what I'm hearing, I don't know that, but if that's what I'm hearing, they're current within the last six months. I think would be wrong to shut them off.
Narrowize their current because they, they paid up, up till September, and they've only thirty days. But I need proof of payment from August twenty-twenty-two to March of twenty-twenty-three.
I understand.
If, if we take everything in twenty-twenty-two out of the picture, take all of those numbers out of the picture and just do twenty-three, are they current?
No.
No. And how much are they behind? Twenty?
Fifteen grand.
And that's for the first three months of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beyond six months, right?
Yes, it's beyond six.
And what was the procedure they wanted you to follow for things that were older than six months?
I had to go on the portal and submit a request to.
For each one of those?
One of those.
And you haven't done that yet, right?
She can't go beyond six months.
No, but she has been.
Has to submit a request for beyond six months, and she hasn't done that.
So I would like to make a motion that you continue on with putting in that request for those that are older than six months with that vendor. And then we go from there. I, I don't recommend shutting off, shutting them off right now. I don't. I don't motion that we do that. I motion that we continue with the procedure that they offered you. Sorry, that was a really long motion.
It's okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I second that. I don't wanna shut them off. I don't, I, I feel confident in what Jim has to say, and I don't, I don't think that. Shutting them off without going through what their request was, is, and I get it, I know that we're a small town and they're just gonna step on us. But it's, it's, the first thing somebody's gonna say to us if we pursue anything beyond what we're doing, is have you exhausted all options? And we haven't, we haven't done anything yet.
Okay, can I ask one more question? If that doesn't work and we're even more in debt, we're on twenty thousand dollars in debt with them, and you're still getting nowhere, when are we gonna shut them off? How, how long is it gonna get us to get them to sign a contract?
Well, contracts are gonna be tough because we're gonna give it to them and it's gonna go to legal.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a whole different, if, if we haven't made any headway by any, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Is this a discussion with the motion on the?
Cause we motioned and seconded, now we need to.
Discussion, okay. I can answer your question with a question to the office manager. How long will it take you to submit those requests for the outstanding, there seems to be like seven or eight of them. Beyond six months using their portal. How long do you think that will take you?
I could start working on it this week. I can't imagine it'd be that long, I just see.
A week?
Okay.
Okay, so if we were able to do that a week, that would give, if it's three. That would give the company three weeks to respond to our requests, and we have an update at the next meeting. If we are nowhere and we're about the same place we are today, then maybe we have a different discussion. But at least we checked the box, we followed their process, we submitted the request through the portal. And, and we, we, we put the ball in their court. Right now, they're thinking the ball's in our court, because they're not, they're not thinking they owe us any money.
I mean, I, I, I would agree to that, that if we're not, if we haven't made any progress, and I'm not saying completely paid up. But if we haven't made any progress by the next meeting, I, I'll agree to shut them off.
That, I think that's fair.
I agree, I think that's fair.
Well, you guys already agreed on the motion, you didn't second it, I mean, you didn't say I.
Um, I motioned, Patrick said he seconded.
We have to vote.
I.
I. Okay.
Uh, let me go on record saying that we're gonna be here next month, owing us more money, and then we're gonna make the motion to shut them off, so.
Okay.
And that's gonna cost taxpayers more money.
I hope not, but if you're right, then I'll be the first to tell you that you were right.
Okay, I'm very confident with the actions, the way that things have happened so far, that is the way it's gonna happen. And we've given them plenty.
All right, next item on the agenda, please, because.
We do have a website on the website. I have, I don't have it on the main page, I can put it on the main page, so it's right there when you go to the health department.
But I do. Thank you.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda, the review at discuss the newsletter topic. I know that Patrick will like to get to his son's game, so it's possible, so we can break this one quick.
Does anyone have any suggestions for the newsletter? There's a newsletter that's going out quarterly, townwide. It's through the selectman's office, and I'm just looking for important suggestions for the newsletter.
Do we wanna put topic-specific things in that newsletter, such as, um, septic system, such as. Something else from the nurse, I know she has quite a bit on there, that's very good. And I actually did go to the website and too, and it's, it's very informative. I, I think there are some things, other areas of the Board of Health that maybe we could touch on, even, um, the animal control officer could put something. I'm not sure what everybody thinks about that. Heather, do you have any opinions on that?
Heather suggested that with the, um, uh, restructuring of the board and the new faces, that maybe we could, uh, say, hi, we are so-and-so. This is your new Dyton Board of Health and Health Department, and, uh, you know, all of our names and contact information, so.
Now, should that be with what Nicole, you know, Grofen, like. What do you put, like, there's like ads, I get it in the mail, I don't read it.
Oh, the strawberry vine?
Yeah, is that what you're talking about, strawberry vine?
We have not, no, this is brand new, this newsletter has not gone out yet.
Oh, okay.
The strawberry vine, but it's brand new, um. Right, it's gonna be for, not just for retirees, it's gonna be for everyone, and it's more gonna be social media based, I believe, right? Yeah, so I won't get it.
So what, what actually went in the mail then? Is that what we're saying? It'll be an online, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if, maybe, following, um. Maybe if we wanna do, hi, this is your health department, these are our, our members, our staff. Um, our roles, and, um, then maybe we could follow up with subsequent newsletters about very specific topics. I think that would be a great thing to do. This is, this is something that's gonna go out for years to come, it's every three months, so. We don't have to get it all in one newsletter. I actually agree with keeping things pithy, right to the point, so if we do that. Does that sound?
I think that's great, I'm glad you.
Okay.
About this.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Next, we need to vote on that, or?
Yeah, we need to vote on that.
I guess just the discussion.
Okay, any public vote? Okay, how about the minutes? I make a motion, oh, I feel I shouldn't make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three from our regular meeting.
Um, I have a few things that I'd like to address in the most, the meeting from last time. Um, under section.
Look at it.
Section five, um, uh, B, there's a line that reads the current tank is under the slab of the home. I think it should read the patio. Um, and then down below there, towards the bottom of, of section B, it says a refined construction sand. That should be C thirty-three sand. And then the existing tank is under the house, and we won't get to it without taking apart the slab, should be the existing sewer pipe is under the slab.
Okay, uh.
And then.
I have a question. What's the difference between a patio or a slab?
Uh, the slab in question is the, the base foundation for the home itself. The patio is a cement square or rectangle that's outside of the home itself that people put their lawn furniture on and things. So that's the difference.
Uh, patio, in my opinion, is blocks that are not cemented in. They can be removed and taken out, and the pipe breaks, we couldn't have a problem. Uh, concrete board is a slab, whether it's inside or it's outside. It's a concrete slab, the sidewalks or slab.
I believe that the sewer pipe, um, that we're discussing comes out from the slab, which is under the house itself, not the slab that is being used outside of the home.
No, it's coming outside of the house.
Yeah, I, I read.
You have to stay underneath it, right?
I, I read the edits. I actually think they're all in order. They, I think, I think that there was a lot of information, it was technical information. So I think that perhaps just a couple of the words got mixed up. But I, I think, I think Mrs. Wilson's concerns are relevant. They're not, they're not big, they're not major changes.
So where it reads tank, Elizabeth, the existing tank, it should be existing sewer pipe? And then, um, uh, just to go back, I'm sorry I have to go back, but it's also part of these notes, um, um, the two-time yearly inspections for this sand filtration system, is that something that we can try to interpret into the permit link? So that the town is notified twice a year when this specific thing needs to be inspected?
That's a good point. So the permit link system will automate or should automate all recurring inspections. I can't specifically say yes, but I'll make sure I ask them that.
That's one of the little tweaks we.
That's a, that's a great question.
All right, and that's all I have, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Then I make a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty, twenty-twenty-three with the changes that were suggested this evening.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.